I'm going to call the October 30th meeting of the Peru Planning Commission to order. Let me have a roll call, please.
Yes, Sandy Faust.
Here.
Carrie Young.
Yeah.
Vincent Edmonds.
Here.
Joseph Moladex.
Here.
Phyllis Torrance.
Here.
Okay. On my agenda. Reading and approving the previous month's minutes. Do I hear a motion to dispense with reading?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, old business. City of Peru parking issues brought to City of Peru Planning Commission by Chief of Police, Mike Meeks. These issues have been brought to Planning Commission due to the issues on some streets in Oakdale. Tree lawn areas have been gravelled for parking. Is...yeah, there he is. Come on up.
I did put together a packet as well, and actually Captain Bill Rayburn and I actually drove around today, took some pictures of some properties. Remember, if you remember right, what we talked about, we just bring everybody to speed in the audience that wasn't here, but what we discussed last time was the parking issues that are out in Oakdale right now, and the way that there is some curbing in some areas that is a little bit low, there's some curbing that's a little bit high, and it seems like people park in those tree lawn areas, and then there's disputes between neighbors sometimes because you park in my tree lawn, and who's actually responsible for taking care of that tree lawn. And with that issue, then, it seems like we've also started to see it kind of go into the...we're afraid that it's going to start going into other areas of our community, whether it's on the West End, East End. So if you...what I've actually put together in this packet is the parking ordinances that the City of Peru Police Department are typically...these are the ones that we enforce. So if you look at the first three or four pages, that's what I put together in this packet. But I'd like to direct you to the...maybe to the pictures, and the first picture in particular. And this one, as you see, and it's this one right here, is at 281 East Ninth Street. And that's what I'm afraid we're going to run into, and we're going to see a lot of this. And I don't know whether they were granted permission, or I guess it's one of the things we've talked about, or do they need to be granted permission? Because if the tree lawn is something that they need to maintain, and if that's their way of saying, "I'm going to maintain it," and just by throwing rock down so that I can park there, because as you can tell, there's no curbing there. And so that's the...that's an area that's just down from where the corner curl ice cream stand used to be. So it's one of those first houses there. As you flip into page two, then, that's a view from...I'll just kind of show the crowd too. That's a view right there of if you're at the crossing, a typical street crossing, and you're looking southbound, that's kind of what we're dealing with there too. Now, that's something that's been longstanding. I mean, there's no curbing there, but that's the kind of parking that we're starting to see. You see a camper parked there, you see the trashcan rack parked there, we see cars parking. What if we had a curb there would be considered parking the wrong direction? But the only concern, then, is if you put curbing there, you don't have enough space to park. So I think some of the things we've already spoken about. Then the next page here is a home at the corner of Seventh and Cass, and you can see kind of what they've done. They've actually kind of gravelled over the curbing, and I don't know whether or not they even got a...and they may have, so I don't know. I didn't research this, but they...I don't know if they actually got a curb cut permit to actually cut that curb to allow them to go ahead and put the gravel there. But basically, what they've done there is just went ahead and gravelled and started driving up into their front yard. And by ordinance, they're allowed to do that, because that's what was passed, as far as I can tell, in 2008. That was passed that allowed them to do that. And then lastly, I went ahead and took a picture. This is a picture on Seventh Street looking northbound towards Eighth Street. So let me just make sure that's right. Yes, looking northbound towards Eighth Street. So once again, you can see like boats parked there, you can see maybe cars parked the wrong way, or had the opportunity to park the wrong way. But once again, if we curb that, we have to have a 10-foot...there has to be a 10-foot right-of-way right there, and I don't think that if we curb that, we'd almost have to prohibit parking there. So now you have homes that can't park where they want to park by their houses. So that's the issues that I know we've talked about last month. These are the things that I'm afraid that if we don't maybe pass an ordinance or pass something that says that prohibits people from doing this, we're going to start seeing this more often, more so maybe in the east and west sides of town, maybe even the area up in the northern part, like maybe by Blair Point School, Duke's Hospital. So with that being said, I don't know...I didn't take any pictures of Oakdale, because I would have assumed you all kind of looked out that way, or maybe have done something over the past month. And I don't have anything new. We haven't had any more complaints. I know, if you remember right, the reason why we even addressed this is because an officer had a complaint from a citizen who had somebody back up in their tree lawn and blocked their car in so that they couldn't get their vehicle out of their own tree lawn onto the street. So with that being said, I don't know that I have any more to present other than what we have here tonight.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments? Any suggestions?
Well, I live in the Oakdale area. My biggest concern is people that will not park right. And so if you park right, you're facing uncoming traffic. And you come down the street and a car that, you know, unexpected pull a pole out from you, right on the corner, they got plenty of room to park and everything, all they got to do is just turn their car right there in the side street and park correctly. That's all they have to do. That's one of my biggest concerns about all this. And another one is people putting five and six automobiles in their yard, not paved or anything else, grass area, heavy-duty equipment that's not even supposed to be there, and nothing seems to be done about it. And I've been on this for years, and, "Well, we can't do this, we can't do that." So I spent a lot of time with your...forgot her first name. Anyway, this afternoon, we come up with a lot of different traffic violations, and what we suggested to the board would be good, and, you know. The reason why those curbs are put in like that, on account of water table is so high in the Oakdale area. And myself, I live on the corner of Monroe, and right by the Assembly God Church. And before we got something done with utilities, I was on there for several years, and finally accumulated enough money that we could get curbs put out there. And I used to get water in my basement above my knees in there, and people were constantly replacing their furnitures...furnaces and everything like that. So when the curbing came in like that, yes, I was disappointed the way it was played out. But then some people didn't want the curb there to begin with, so they just decided they're going to park wherever they want to park, and ignored that completely, and...
Well, now we need to talk about what these people are going to do that don't have curbs, the ones who have nothing.
Up there?
The ones that have no curb, and they're parking on the lawn.
Yeah.
Yeah. Where...what is the situ...what's the solution to that, where they have no place to park? Regardless of which direction they're parking, they have nowhere to park, except...
They still can obey the laws and park like that.
Okay. We'll agree on that.
Yeah.
My only concern is there's, in my opinion, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but by what I see in the ordinances, there is no law to write those folks on if they're parked in that tree lawn if there is no curb. Because the law states that your right-side tires must be within 12 inches of the curb. And if there is no curb, there is my...in our opinion, law enforcement and a judge would say there is no violation. So when we have no curb, as you're stating, where do we allow people to park? What do we allow them to do with that tree lawn?
Is there any way that you can distinguish, okay, Mr. Jones has a tree lawn that he has gravelled in, and Mr. Smith has a tree lawn next door that he has gravelled in? Is there any distinction between where Mr. Smith and Mr. Jones can park as far as going over onto each other's? Is that considered private property that he's trespassing?
I think it's a gray area. I really do. And because it is, you know, as we all say, it belongs to the city but maintained by the homeowner, so it's a gray area as to...I don't even know what we would write. I don't believe it could be trespassing. I could say we may write it, we may try to write it up like that. I don't think a judge or prosecutor will prosecute them for that.
So anybody can park anywhere?
Unfortunately. But well, like we talked about before, though, what if I get in that tree lawn, and maybe you have a small amount of gravel there, but I decide I'm going to do a burnout in that? It's your property, it's supposed to be maintained by you. Can you sue me, or did I commit criminal mischief because I damaged a piece of property that's not your property, belongs to the city? So there's so many iffy gray areas in this whole thing. And I...once again, I know we talked about it, we couldn't handle this in one meeting. I don't even know that we can handle this in two meetings or 12 meetings. I don't...it's too...it's just so complex, and there's so many different areas we need to look at. And if it was just confined to the Oakdale area, I think we would be okay. But I think when we see people that want to do this, as we saw in these pictures, that want to do this elsewhere through our town or city, then what's our next step? And how do we prevent those folks from doing that? And I think maybe that's the bigger...maybe the bigger picture right now, because I think...I don't want to say we just need to leave the Oakdale people alone. It's just what they've become accustomed to. And I agree with Ms. Torrance here, that I don't think we should be able to allow them to park the wrong way, but when it's in a tree lawn and there's no curb, there is no violation of the law. So...but once again, can we now write that into an ordinance? Because I agree with you, I don't like it either, because it is a danger. They are going to be crossing a lane of travel that they should not be crossing, especially if another car's parked on the street, and they're trying to see, and they can't see, and it's nighttime, and you blind people, you know, you turn your headlights on, and you blind the other person that's coming down that way if you're parked on the wrong side of the street. So I wholeheartedly agree with her. Maybe that's just something we need to look at. If nothing else, maybe that is a parking issue that we need to add into our ordinances that prohibits people from parking the wrong way in a tree lawn type area. So that could be a start.
Chief, are you aware of any accidents that have occurred because of the inappropriate parking?
I know of none. I've been on 24 years, I don't know of any that have been caused due to that.
Okay.
I can't say that there shouldn't...there could have been. There may be some near misses, but to say that it happened because of it, I don't know.
Okay.
Do you see any solution? Really, I mean, if you've got the tree lawn, if you don't allow them to park on that, then you've got like a bicycle path between two cars if they're parked in front of their home.
But you can't have that, because it has to maintain the distance for emergency vehicles.
Right.
So that would be illegal parking there.
So what's the answer?
I don't...do we go street...maybe we go street by street. I'll refer to Ms. Torrance again. Last time, I think she referred to Washington and how wide that is. Now, if someone didn't have a curb in front of their house, should we permit them to be allowed to gravel their tree lawn? I would say no, because they have the ability to park on the street, anywhere on that street. But maybe the more narrow the street is, maybe we don't allow them...maybe we do need to allow them to park on the tree lawn. So maybe that's a study we need to do as a board, and as a department is go street by street down there and take a look and say, "Okay, we're going to prohibit you from parking here," and then we'll talk to the traffic department about putting signs in those locations.
Well, Stephanie's passed out a...these are from the City of Wabash, what they've done. And there's actually some street-by-street ordinances. So on this street, you cannot do it, but on the street you can type of thing. And it goes street by street due to the fact that every street is dirt. So, I mean, there's several ways we as the board could go with this. We could make any recommendation, pass it off to City Council, and put it on their desk. Pose to that. Let sleeping dogs lie over there. But that eventually will become an issue.
And that was my concern, and that's kind of why I came here, is because that one complaint that we had, it's one.
Let's close the door before the horses come out.
Right, right. And if I could even direct you, the first ordinance on this packet here, where it talks about the fact that when this was passed by the City Council in 2008, you know, it allows people to actually go ahead and...it basically says you cannot park in an unpaved area in the city, public or private vehicles, recreation vehicles, boats, because of the leakage of gasoline, oil, antifreeze, other fluids. But then at the very last line there, it says, "For purposes of provision, gravel driveways shall be considered paved." So, you know, we're going to run into the same thing Ms. Torrance just talked about. We could typically have...we could have someone with five vehicles parked in their backyard, but if it's gravelled, we have no say-so, because they are following the city ordinance that was passed 10 years ago.
They had to do that, too. It was a kind of leaking gasoline. It was an environmental issue that...but my goodness, back in the '50s when I was in high school, driver's ed taught you how to park, what direction to park that. I don't see any...I think anybody that's parked wrong ought to be ticketed, give them a warning, and then, you know, give them a ticket. That's as simple as simple can be.
You can't disagree, so long as it's an ordinance or a state law. I cannot disagree with you in any way, shape, or form with that. So let me go ahead and maybe do my homework. Maybe I can come back in a couple of months, I'll give you folks a break from this mess. But maybe we all can...if you...I guess maybe what I will ask of you is maybe each of us drive down those city streets, in Oakdale especially, because I think maybe we need to start with that area and then work our way out. Because I really don't see a need for anybody to gravel their tree lawn, and any...I don't, off the top of my head, I can't think of any east-west street that that would need to be done. I think we see maybe a need for on a north-south street, that typical new area that we spoke of, the Lafayette Street. It seems like those have already been established, they're already there. And I think if we take those away, then they're not going to have areas to park where they're going to park in on the street, and then they're going to be prohibited from doing that, because the right-of-way will not be wide enough for them.
Or basically not letting these people have any company over or anything like that, when you come right down to it, we can't do that either. So...
Well, you get that up on the wall.
They can park on one side of the street.
Yeah, one side.
Well...
You can't have any company there. They got their cars up in the yard.
I don't know if you're allowed to table it for two months, or whether you have to go...
Absolutely.
It has to be tabled till the next month, and then...I'm not sure how the rules of meetings work.
You go ahead.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we table this for further discussion and research, and bring you back in a couple of months and see what we come up with.
Can we table it two months away?
Two months?
We can, okay. Let's do that.
Go ahead, second.
I'll take the motion.
I'll hear it.
Thank you, Chief. This was excellent.
All right.
Okay, one minute. Around two months, Sandy?
Yeah.
Table for two months?
See, January?
Pardon me?
Yes.
Bring it back to fiscal year.
December.
Fine with me.
Just...you let me know, it doesn't matter to me. Which one?
I would say...what is that, December, fall, though? Isn't that like...
We even put that one, I do believe, up further because of the holidays. It's like the third Tuesday, do you believe, of December?
The third Tuesday would be the 18th?
Yeah, that sounds right. Does it work?
December the 18th, one?
It's fine.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
December 18th?
December 18th, yeah. Is one we'll bring that back.
Okay. Okay. All right, new business. 60 Thorpe Drive rezoning from R1 to B3. Do we have anybody here want to come up to the podium and tell us what you want to do?
Hello.
How are you doing?
I'm Tom Lennon, and I own the property of 60 Thorpe, which is right across the street from the Tracks and Restaurant. And Mr. Eldridge here has made an offer to purchase the property, build a building on, contingent on it being rezoned from R1...
R1 to B3.
R1 to B3.
Okay.
And that's what we're proposing to do. He wants to place a building on it.
For personal and business use only.
It's a vacant lot right now.
What kind of business?
I own a construction business. That'll be around the other biggest reason. If you can.
Okay. Has everybody had a chance to go down that area and check it out?
Yeah, I have been.
Does anybody?
Dave, you want to put that up, so we can see what we're talking about here?
I thought I had it ready, but I've got the wrong Thorpe. Okay, give me a minute.
Tom, the front, yes. You're on the side. Of course, Tracks Restaurant, right here. Yeah, right there. Okay. Got there, okay.
Got a question to ask. Will you have any outside storage if we're doing construction work?
I have one of spare vehicles that will be on site, and maybe one of my trailers.
It's not it?
No, it's down further.
You're in the wrong spot?
No, that's right.
Sorry. Great one.
Let me pull it down a little bit, down a little...
That one?
Show where Tracks is.
That's it. Because that's the accounting office right there.
Okay. Got it.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, and it is currently R1?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone here that has any remonstration? Anybody that would like to say anything about this? Is there any discussion on the board?
I have none.
Nothing?
Make sure we bring you to a vote.
I second that motion.
We have a roll call? Just a second, yeah. Okay. Sandy Faust?
Yes.
Carrie Young?
Yes.
Vincent Edmonds?
Yes.
Joseph Moladex?
Yes.
Phyllis Torrance?
Yes.
And that's all we have.
And you know this goes to the City Council next.
Next, Monday night.
Yes.
It'll go to the next City Council.
We're an advisory board. We're going to make...tell them that we've looked this and we've approved it, then they will have the final vote on that. And that will be Monday night at 6 o'clock in this room.
Yes, that will be, yes.
Thanks for your business.
Thank you.
We'll see you there.
There's Mr. Ted. I believe he has something to tell us.
Jim, do you need copies, real quick? Good evening. How are you?
Fine.
Good. Thanks for the opportunity to be on the agenda tonight. I apologize. I thought you would have had copies of this, and apparently there is a technical glitch. But what I'm here to talk with you about tonight is the previous economic development areas that the Planning Commission has supported in the past with the Miami County Economic Development Authority. Over the past couple of years, we have come to you, and you have graciously approved a development plan for what we call the US 2431 Broadway Development Area. And then we extended that area to include downtown district. We then came back and presented a development plan for the West End. That was at the time we had a retail entity that was looking at going into that area up by Kroger's called ShopCo. Subsequently, we also amended that plan to include the former CSX property that now is being considered for development in that spot by the YMCA. So you have supported us in the past with the approval of those plans and our depository resolutions, which identified those as economic development or tax incremental financial districts. Today, we're here to talk about a new plan, or a different plan, which would be a consolidation of those former areas. And again, I apologize for this, but I can pass this around for you to see what we're...
Jimmy, can I make copies? I can make copies if you'd like.
Dave, you want to put the map up on the screen, just zoom out real far, and then I think you just be able to point to it.
Okay.
See if that works for you.
Yeah, the only thing I would refer to that's probably not going to be on the map is going to be the highlighted areas. The area that is highlighted in blue is what was the...what we consider the US 24 Broadway TIF with the expansion then of the downtown. The yellow area is the West End development area with the expansion of the CSX property down there on the southern border. Now, we're here to talk about consolidating those two development areas into one development plan, but at the same time, adding another area that is highlighted in red, and that is the Peru Industrial Park. I'm not sure why that area was never included. Well, it's basically, we thought that the park was full, and there probably wouldn't maybe be any expansion or those kind of things coming up. Well, you know, they proved this wrong, and there is some expansion and further development that is taking place in that area. So again, this new plan adds...excuse me, adds those parcels which are in the Peru Industrial Park, which I believe that other sheet there, Sandy, that's in front of you, I think that adds maybe...oh, no, I'm sorry. We are adding all of the parcels that are basically in that yellow area, the Peru Industrial Park. But at the same time, we saw some errors in the West End parcel, that we're taking some parcels out of that West End. These parcels are basically parcels that have been residential, or that they're properties that are losing assessed value. So, and that impacts the TIF district. So basically, again, we are consolidating the plan into a new plan called the Consolidated City of Peru Development Plan that is dated October the 10th of 2018. And we are adding that Peru Industrial Park. The reason we're doing this is that if we put these under one development plan, it gives us more flexibility in being able to use TIF funds to be able to support projects in any one of those areas. Right now, with them being isolated areas, for example, the US 24 Broadway area with the expansion of the downtown, the funds, the TIF funds that are generated from that area, we can only use in that designated area. The same with the West End, that whole area in yellow. If there is any increase in assessed value, we can only use the TIF funds within that What we're asking you to do is to basically support this plan and say basically that this plan does complement the city's plan for development, and it is consistent with the city's plan for development. And the other thing that we are asking you to also consider is basically approving the authority's depository resolution, which basically says the same thing that I just said, that we're consolidating this plan into one and we're adding the Peru Industrial Park as part of the plan. Be happy to answer any questions. And again, I apologize that there was a technical witch that we didn't get you copies. But I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you may have, look at the plan. Here is a copy of the actual resolution that we had asked for you to consider. The first part of the resolution is basically just some of the descriptions that follow every resolution. It basically just says that, well, here's another copy. It basically says that McKeady was established under Indiana state statutes that the Peru City Council identified the Economic Development Authority as the redevelopment commission. And then it goes through a series of paragraphs, but the last two paragraphs in there are truly the meat of the resolution in that you, by signing this resolution or adopting this resolution, you are basically approving the development plan for the consolidated plan as I described, and that you are in agreement with the depository resolution that our authority passed back in the 10th of October.
Jim, could you give a real quick definition of a TIF property?
Sure. Be happy to do that. TIF stands for Tax Incremental Financing District. It's a defined area that is established by redevelopment commission with the approval of the planning commission and the ultimate approval of the city council. And there is also a public hearing process. But basically, once that passes through all of the agencies that it needs to, the boundaries that is identified by parcel listing or actual map, and we have both as part of this plan, is designated as that economic district or allocation area. The base assessed value, once you establish that, and if we establish this, the base assessed value will be as of January 1 of 2018. So whatever that base assessed value is, is frozen. And so the taxing units will continue to get that tax revenue off of that base assessed value. If there is development that occurs in that TIF, that new assessed value, which is above the base, that's based on that real property investment, is captured in the TIF. And that new assessed value equates to tax revenue and real property tax revenue only that can be used for certain projects to help spur development. It can be used for site development for a particular site. It can be used for purchasing, acquiring property, can be used for blight elimination, it can be used for demolition. There's a whole multitude of things by statute that that revenue can be used for. Remember, at the same time, what has been generated and is currently generated is going to the taxing units. This is also a real personal, or, excuse me, a real property TIF only. So many communities do both real property and personal property and equipment. This is only real property. So whatever is associated with this expansion by these industries that is equipment and personal property goes to the taxing units, subject to an abatement if that's what the council approves to do. But TIF only captures the real property assessed value.
And that's just what's over and above the...
What's over and above the base. And if there's a situation where, for whatever reason, assessed value goes down, okay, that base has to make, be made whole, okay, until, before any of that TIF, or any of that new AV is captured. So let's say, for example, if the, if the base year was set at 20 million for that particular area, and that base value went down for some reason by eight, to 18 million, then 2 million of that new assessed value would have to be put back into the base to be able to, before any TIF revenue was, was passed on. So that base always stays the base. Now, it is subject to trending. So if trending goes, if there's increase in assessed value due to trending, that doesn't get captured in the TIF. That goes to the base and to the taxing units.
Okay. Is there a time limit on any of, once an area is made a TIF area?
Once there is a sunset of 25 years from the time that there is a financial obligation on the TIF. So if there is a bond or debt that is pledged by using the TIF funds, then there is a sunset date of 25 years. Now, every year, the, we have to go through a process where we have to declare, our board is the redevelopment commission, whether there is any assessed value that can be turned back to the taxing units. So if there is no debt or no projects that need to be completed with those funds or portion of those funds, then we can turn back actually assessed value that goes back into the base and gets spread across all the taxing units. And that's a year-to-year evaluation that's done. And we have to send you and the city council a notification of whether we did or did not turn back any assessed value.
Okay.
And the other thing that I would add about TIF, just so, because many people do not understand this, that when you're talking about, people will say, well, look, if we didn't have to do the TIF, look at all those tax dollars that would come back into the taxing units. It's not dollar for dollar. If there wasn't for the TIF, the only thing that you would be increasing is assessed value. So not tax dollars. Now, originally, now, let me, let me clarify what I'm saying. Let's say that a TIF generates, well, right now, let's take the US-24 Broadway area. Right now, that generates about $24,000 a year in, in TIF funds. We pledge that right now to, like, rediscover downtown for them to use in their facade improvement program, okay? If that TIF were not there, or if we decided that project, facade program wasn't needed anymore, and we turned back, or that TIF wasn't there, we turned back that assessed value, it would only be that assessed value. It's not like the city gets $24,000 more in revenue. It, it, you get more assessed value, which lowers the tax rate, but it's not like you get more tax revenue because of caps and other things. You just get more assessed value, which could pennies on the dollar lower the tax rates on, but you wouldn't have the development there. So anyway, I hope that maybe explains it a little bit.
I'll tell you a funny story. Years ago, when I was on redevelopment, when all this came about, when we were down there at the bowling alley, when it was trying to get established down there, and the CNO depot was still there, you know, had ten, one of the meetings and this, this is funny. This young woman comes in and she's all dressed up, business-wise and everything else, and she gets up and said that she was interested in that. And Jeff Butts, at the time, I recall, asked her what did she intend to do with that CNO property if it was tore down, you know, the yard office? "Well, I'm going to make money." And he said, "Yeah." And he asked her, again, "We all want to make money, but how are you going to make money?" "Well, I'm going to print it." And he said, "Lady, I can't allow you to do that. I'm a police officer. That's counterfeit, you know." And I sat there and I couldn't believe it, and neither could Holmes', who was putting the new bowling alley in. It was, she was so sincere. And she said, "Okay." She got up and walked out. It was one of the funniest things that ever happened, that she was so truthful about that. I don't know, I don't know what was the matter with her or anything. After it was all over, everybody looked at everybody. They couldn't believe it, and then all of a sudden, everybody decided to laugh, you know. It was funny. From my experiences, I'll never forget that.
Jim, I have a question for you. Can you share with us the projected revenue or TIF revenue that is anticipated for the industrial park area as well as the West End?
Well, the industrial park area, I can tell you right now that we're in the back of this plan. As part of this plan, there is a forecast of what we anticipate currently, which we've identified three particular manufacturing expansions totaling about $14 million that would generate about 60 new jobs. So with that, so assuming that the, their investment, now that's their actual dollar investment, how the county or how the assessor assesses that and what the AV comes to be, you know, is, but, okay, for real quick math, if you say that 14 million is going to be 10 million in true assessed value, so if you divide 10 million by 100, what's that, what's that come up to?
A lot.
About 10,000. Probably about 10,000. Am I correct on that?
You are.
Okay, so, and then times the 3% cap rate, so you're talking about $30,000 worth of, of revenue.
And so by consolidating the, it looks like three TIF areas, can revenue from one area be used in another area?
Yes, sir.
If they're consolidated.
If they're, if they're consolidated, and I, phew, thank you for bringing that up because I totally gapped and didn't tell you how they're connected. You can see that they're not contiguous.
Right.
Okay? But by law, you can use right-ofways.
Okay.
To make them contiguous. So you're connecting Peru Industrial Park to the Broadway US-24 by the right-ofway on US-24. And then you're, that connects to the downtown, and then you're connecting the downtown to the West End via the Wabash River, which is especially, especially, or, how do I say it, is definitely waterways is one of the ones that you connect. You can make areas contiguous. So that's basically how that, how that is. But again, you're absolutely right. That's why we're doing this, is it gives us more flexibility to use funds in the different areas that need it the most and prioritize projects.
And is there a process for expanding, you know, in the future into other...
No, I think this pretty much, I, looking at development areas, I think we pretty much, within the city of Peru, once the industrial park, I, you know, I'm not sure where, unless the city annexes quite a bit, you know, that whole US-24 corridor could be a development area on both sides of 24, north and south side. But right now, I think that pretty much, you could probably develop more in the downtown, you know, which is going to be more commercial than maybe industrial. But I think this provides a good, good, good balance. I mean, Wabash, the whole city of Wabash is a TIF. So, and they connect it by, believe it or not, utility lines. So the whole city of, of Wabash is, is a TIF. You know, I, I don't necessarily agree with that. As an economic developer, I think that, you know, what we have proposed here is a good mix. And again, we're only, it's not like we lose these funds. You know, these funds are going to help development throughout the city, so we're all benefiting. It's just who controls those funds. But we're all working on the same purpose, so.
Are there any other questions? Comments? Anybody in the audience have any questions?
She, she...
I'm saying. Yeah. The luck. Okay.
Well, I don't want to force anything on the commission, but if there is a consideration based on a timing schedule, because I've got to try to get all this in, but if you're not comfortable in approving the plan or adopting the plan and approving the resolution, I'm, I'm not here to try to force it, force it on you. I am trying to get this done before the first of the year, so the, the base date becomes January 1. But I've got the city council left to go and then my board left to go, plus a public hearing to hold on this. So, but we can make adjustments if, if the commission is not comfortable in those, those actions or passing that resolution tonight.
Just one final question. Have you received any opposition to this consolidated plan?
No, sir, not yet.
Does anybody have any reason not to vote on this?
Nope.
Okay, I make a motion. We bring this to vote.
And I don't know what resolution number you want to use.
That'll be Tish's decision. Tish, Tish will make that as you take it to council. She'll number it for you.
So...
It'll be, in orders, it'll be different, but we'll use that council number. That's what I always use. Joe, did I have a second from you?
Yes.
Ready?
Take a roll call.
Roll call. Sandy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Phyllis?
Yes.
Thank you very much. If I could get, or I can get it from you later on.
I don't have a copy of that either.
Huh?
I don't have a copy of the resolution either.
No, I'd love to...
Here's one, here's one. You got this one.
Oh.
So here's the next one.
It's got, um, thank you. The resolution has got the president, so I assume that...
Just one final question. Have you received any opposition to this consolidated plan?
No, sir, not yet.
Does anybody have any reason not to vote on this?
Nope.
Okay, I make a motion, we bring this to vote.
And I don't know what resolution number you wanna use.
That'll be Tish's decision. Tish, Tish will make that, as you take it to council.
Okay.
She'll number it for you.
So...
It'll be, in orders, it'll be different, but we'll use that council number, that's what I always use. Joe, did I have a second from you?
Yes.
Ready?
Take a roll call.
Roll call. Sandy?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Phyllis?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I could get, or I can get it from you later on.
I don't have a copy of that either. I don't have a copy of the resolution either.
No, I'd love to...
Here's one, here's one, if you got this one.
Oh.
So here's an extra one.
It's got, um, thank you. The resolution has got the president, so I assume that would be seen. Yes. And then it asks you to do a test, it's up here. Okay, hold on for this, Tish can put the resolution. Okay. Well, you want me to thank you, please? Thank you, I'm sorry.
Anything, anybody else?
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I think we pretty much...
Do I hear a motion? We adjourn.
I make a motion and we adjourn.
I second the motion.